Come on, I call this meeting to order. And today's invocation will be Pastor Michael Rhoades from the Senior Pastor for International Christian Church. Welcome.
Hey, guys. Let's all bow our heads, let's pray. Dear Father, standing before your presence, Lord, we humble ourselves. We ask, Lord, for wisdom. Because we are not the God of the universe, Lord, you are. You know things from beginning to end. And in your great sovereignty, you knew that we would all be here today. I pray, Father, for every council member and every person that is here, that you would grant us wisdom, wisdom to make the right choices on behalf of the citizens of this great city. Wisdom, Father, to make the choices between what is right, what is prudent, and what is wise. I also pray, Father, grace upon grace upon every servant of this great city. Lord, they stand before you. They are humble, Lord, at this moment. And I pray blessings over them and their families and the work of their hands. I also pray for your peace, that your presence would be here, that everyone who comes here and speaks, Lord, they would have grace in their hearts today. They would be able to listen, and be slow to speak and slow to anger. So we commit this time to you, God. We ask, Lord, that your name would be hallowed in this place, that you would be made much of. So guard our hearts and guard our minds, and may your agenda be accomplished today. We commit it to you now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And if we may, offer a moment of silence for those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our nation and our city. Moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay, do I have a motion for certification of the closed session?
Second.
Okay.
One second, Mayor. The vote is open.
All righty.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have certified the closed session to meet in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of September 5th, 2023, and the formal session of September 12th, 2023? Okay.
The vote is open. Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
You know, during mayor's presentations, we get to honor certain groups and individuals who play a significant impact for us in the city of Virginia Beach. In recognition of Hunger Action Month, I'm going to ask my friend and colleague, Michael Bellucci, to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. September is Hunger Action Month, and we are very privileged to have with us representatives from the food bank. And I wonder if they would join us at the podium to receive this proclamation. Clearly, one of the most important issues any community or nation faces is the matter of nutrition, hunger, and food scarcity. And I thank you, and I know my colleagues in community, thank you for the work you do to serve our community in so many different ways. Whereas hunger and food insecurity are issues of grave concern in the United States, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the city of Virginia Beach. Whereas the city of Virginia Beach is taking steps to raise awareness about the necessity to combat hunger in our community and provide additional resources to citizens in need. And whereas Feeding America estimates that nearly 34 million people, 10.4%, including more than 9 million children, 12.8% in the United States, are food insecure. And whereas the food insecurity rate in Virginia is 8.1% and hunger is a daily experience for 704,000 people and more than 164,000 people being children. Whereas the city of Virginia Beach has a food insecurity rate of 6.8%, happy to report, lower than the national and state average of 31,310 and is home to more than 8,300 food insecure children who may not have consistent access to enough food for an active, healthy lifestyle. And whereas child nutrition programs in particular play a critical role in providing quality nutritious meals to millions of children every day for free or at a reduced cost. And whereas the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore distributed more than 21 million pounds of food to neighbors experiencing hunger within our 4,745 square mile service area last year. And whereas all businesses, citizens, community organizations are invited to support and to participate in the community efforts to collect food and funds, as well as volunteer their time. And whereas the city of Virginia Beach is committed to working with the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore, along with over 200 partner agencies and program sites, the Federation of Virginia Food Banks, and Feeding America, and educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness about the need to devote more resources and intention to hunger-related issues. Therefore, Robert M. Bobby Dyer, Mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, hereby proclaims September 2023 as Hunger Action Month and September 15th, 2023, as Hunger Action Day in the city of Virginia Beach. And I'll be delighted to present this proclamation to you with the mayor, if he would be so kind, and then invite you to say a few words. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Food Bank, I'd like to say thank you for this recognition. We are so pleased with our partnership with the city of Virginia Beach. You should be commended as members of council and as the city representatives of your commitment to fighting food insecurity in your city in particular. During the COVID pandemic, you invested a lot of resources into making sure that the citizens of the city of Virginia Beach were well-fed and that those would not have to go without food. Just maybe a mile down the road at the amphitheater, last month, we served 2,400 households in less than three hours in the city of Virginia Beach. The largest provider of food in our service area as a partner agency is Eastern Shore Chapel, which serves almost 1,000 families a month. The one note that I would tell you and let you know is that COVID was a remarkable time for food banks. That's absolutely true, and having to pivot and change what we did. But the lines are longer today than they were then, much longer, 20% to 30% longer. The resources that were available to citizens on a regular basis during COVID have all gone in the last 12 months. Snap enrollment is really, snap enrichment has gone down. And so we know that the work for us is really kind of just beginning. Last year, as we said, we set a record for 21 million pounds, and we're 20% above that goal right now. So we look forward to our continued work with the city. And thank you for supporting the work of the Food Bank. We really appreciate it.
And thank you for doing what you do. Thank you. And next, I would like to invite Delegate Barry Knight to come up. You know, effective and good government depends on positive relationships, building bridges of understanding, you know, both with our federal partners and especially with our state partners. And Barry has been a champion for the city of Virginia Beach, but he's also been a stalwart in help with budget negotiations and just taking the role seriously to make the Commonwealth an even better place. I've asked my friend and colleague and fellow Marine, Rocky Holcomb, who spent a couple of years in the House of Delegates with Barry, if you would kindly read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for being here tonight. Resolution: Whereas native Virginian Barry D. Knight has served in the Virginia House of Delegates since 2009, Barry is the current chairman of the House Appropriations Committee, as well as serves on General Laws Committee and Rules Committee. And whereas Barry has spent his professional life in the field of agricultural business, in the political scene, Barry has proactively worked to bolster the local economy and protect citizens' rights. And whereas Barry's introduction to farming began at the ripe age of 14, by '26, he had purchased his own farm, which grew to be a vast 640 acres and produced up to 25,000 finished hogs each year. Utilizing his expertise, Barry served as the president of the Tidewater Pork Producers from 1984 to 1990, and was appointed by two governors to the Virginia Pork Board. And whereas Barry has accumulated several honors, including Virginia's Farm Bureau's Young Farmer of the Year, Clean Water Farm Award, and Virginia Beach Man of the Year in Agriculture. And whereas Barry has also been a public servant to the very same community that has contributed to his personal and professional success. Barry has served on the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, Virginia Dairy Soil and Water, Virginia Beach Farm Bureau, Military Aviation Museum, Southern States... Barry, I got to go on and on. Cooperative Chesapeake Association, Back Bay Punggol Civic League, Oak Grove Baptist Church, Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee, and the Major Employment and Investment Commission. And whereas Barry has frequently been awarded the Champion of Free Enterprise by the Virginia Chamber of Commerce, named the 2021 Legislator of the Year, and named Legislator of the Year by the Virginia Service Association, the Agribusiness Councilman of the Year, and Port Champion by the Virginia Maritime Association. And whereas Barry's acts of services touch members of his community as a former coach for Women's League Softball and Little League Baseball. Alongside his family, Barry is a devout and active member of the Oak Grove Baptist Church. Barry is the chairman of the Grounds Committee, the Business Moderator, Past Deacon, and can often be found teaching Sunday School. And whereas, on this day, we honor a pillar of our community who deserves our deepest gratitude and respect for all that he has accomplished for his earnest efforts to serve all our citizens. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pause in its deliberations to express its appreciation to Barry D. Knight for his commitment and service to our city and our Commonwealth, adopted by the Council of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, the 19th day of September, 2023, and present this resolution duly signed by each member of the Virginia Beach City Council. Thank you very much, Barry. Thank you. And if I could get my colleagues to join me to present this. If I could get my colleagues to join me at the podium, and we'll present this to Barry.
And Barry, sincere thanks for everything you have done, continue to do, and will continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to say is, Mayor, members of council, it's very humbling and honored to get this, and I really appreciate it. And as far as our great city, my kinfolk got here in 1650s and got a land grant from the King of England of 600 acres here in Princess Anne County. Then I can remember, when I was about seven or eight years old, a car drove up in our driveway, and it was a gentleman by the name of Cindy Kellum. He told my mom, he says, you know, he says, "We're going to try to have a merger because Norfolk's trying to take our land from us." He said, "We'd like to merge Princess Anne County with Virginia Beach, and we think it's a good deal." And you know what? Here we are 50 years later or so, and it was a good deal. And it's a good deal because of what all y'all do here and what everyone back here does to represent the city of Virginia Beach. And thank you very much.
And thank you. It's truly an honor to honor people that deserve honor. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to open up a public hearing, and the first one is going to be a lease on the fiber optic dark cable to Lumos Telephone LLC. And pursuant to Code Section 15-2, 1813, the Virginia Beach City Council will hold a public hearing to obtain public comment regarding the proposed lease of four strands of city-owned fiber optic cable to Lumos Telephone LLC in the form of dark fiber. We call for speakers?
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. Therefore, I will close that part of the public hearing. The next item of businesses and lease of city properties at the farmers' market, and that is Building 7, spaces 7 and 8 to Creekmore Place LLC, Building 2, space 11 to Kempsville Florist and Gift Shop, Building 1, space 10 to Guard House to Seasons Best Bakery, and Suite 815 to Beach and Seafood LLC. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers, sir.
Okay. And then, moving on, for transportation alternatives for set-aside program.
There's one speaker, Walter Camp.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. The federal-state transportation alternative set-aside program reserves a small portion of all roadway funding to be used for pedestrian and bikeway projects. And this has been the main source of such funding from the state for our city. It's a very important grant program, even more so as the smart-scale program criteria are about to change, favoring automobiles and leaving less money on the table for bikeways, pedestrians, and trails. The two candidate projects are aligned with the Active Transportation Plan passed by council. And also, in the resort area, they are aligned with the Resort Area Mobility Plan passed by council. Your Active Transportation Advisory Committee has been involved in these. We took a briefing from Economic Development on these projects in the spring. Every year, we take a briefing from Traffic Engineering on crash statistics throughout the city. And these are high-priority projects. In the summertime, we took a site tour out there on Norfolk Avenue. Councilmember Rouse, Councilmember Remick, joined us on that to actually see conditions on the ground out there. And so we're very pleased at the cooperation between Public Works, Parks and Rec, Economic Development, to prioritize these kind of projects for the public and to bring greater public safety for our pedestrians, for our bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Next, we're going to move on. Before the consent agenda, I will read the speaker's policy. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent agenda items, the speaker will have a cumulative total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. And finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers, one-item speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent agenda.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under K ordinances and resolutions, number one is the ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease for a portion of city right-of-way known as Ocean View Avenue adjacent to 4536 Ocean View Avenue for up to five years. Number two is an authorize, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a lease with Hiley Harper Kraus for the city-owned dwelling located at 2089 Indian River Road. Number three is a resolution to request the Commonwealth Transportation Board approve two projects for the transportation alternatives set-aside program for FY 2024/25 and FY 2025/26, and affirm the city's local commitment to such projects, rate Pacific Avenue pedestrian crossings phase two and Norfolk Avenue pedestrian improvements. Number six, the ordinance to extend the date for satisfying the conditions, rate closing a 750-square-foot portion of an unapproved lane adjacent to the rear of 276th Street. Number seven is a resolution to support revenue-sharing project number 1,058, Centerville Turnpike Phase 3, and authorize the city manager to execute a project agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Number eight is a resolution to support revenue-sharing project number 1,123, Cleveland Street Improvements 4, and authorize the city manager to execute a project agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Number five is a resolution to support revenue-sharing project number 1,340, Rosemont Road Phase 5, and authorize the city manager to execute a project agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Number 10 is a resolution to support revenue-sharing project number 1,529, Elbow Road Extended Phase 2B, and authorize the city manager to execute a project agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Number 11 is the resolution to support revenue-sharing project number 1,278, Nemo Parkway 7B, and to authorize the city manager to execute a project agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation V. DOT. Number 12 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $8,7,388 from the Department of Defense Community Investment Pilot Program, accept and appropriate $1.4 million from the Virginia Military Community Infrastructure Grant Program, and fund appropriate $2,031,738 from the general fund to the FY 2023/24 Police Department operating budget. Transfer such funds totaling $11,439,126 as pay-go funding to the FY 2023/24 Capital Improvement Program Project, number 1,536, rate the Creeds Training Center renovations. Number 13 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $1.5 million from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Primary Extension Paving Program to CIP 10401, Street Reconstruction 2, rate road paving projects. Number 14 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $650,000 from the Carbon Reduction Program to CIP 1,537, Dam Neck Road, Holland Road Extension Improvement, store water infrastructure projects. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $327,820 from the United States Department of Homeland Security to the FY 2023/24 Police Department operating budget and transfer $109,273 for a required local grant match, rate purchase of a replacement marine patrol vessel and electronic upgrade for a separate marine patrol vessel. Number 16 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $98,630 from the Department of Motor Vehicles to the FY 2023/24 Police Department's operating budget, rate overtime and equipment expenses related to speed enforcement. Number 17 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $67,450 from the Department of Motor Vehicles to the FY 2023/24 Police Department operating budget, rate overtime, training, and equipment expenses related to DUI enforcement. Number 18 is the ordinance to appropriate $599,000 to the Virginia Beach Volunteer Rescue Squad, Inc., rate an interest-free loan to purchase two new ambulances. Number 19 is the ordinance to appropriate $587,676 from the Technology Trust Fund to the FY 2023/24 Clerk of the Circuit Court operating budget to support technological-related needs and upgrades. Number 20 is the ordinance to appropriate $20,267 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2023/24 Police Department operating budget, rate social media advertisements, targeted media, email distribution, website advertisements, and retargeted end purchases with the goal of recruitment of sworn personnel. Number 29 is a resolution to approve the modification of a construction contract, rate Lake Pleasure House Outfall.
Okay, open a public hearing on planning.
Number two is the Burnett Baum Development Corporation for a conditional use permit, rate a car wash facility at 213 Indian River Road, and that's in District 1. Number three is the Kids Adventure Security added in for a conditional use permit, rate family daycare home at 5408 Larissa Court, District 1. Number five, Solon Bridge Development LLC for a conditional use permit, rate bulk storage yard at 130 London Bridge Road, District 6, with Mr. Taylor and Rosemary Wilson abstaining. Number six, the Francis Robinson Omen, Francis Robinson Omen and Kyle Omen for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rentals at 907 Pacific Avenue, District 5. Number seven, Jim Lutz Lulu 1 LLC for a conditional use permit, rate short-term rentals at 921 Pacific Avenue, Unit A, and 915 Pacific Avenue, Unit B, District 5. And that completes it. And I believe Mr. Bellucci wanted to say something once we voted.
Okay, I believe Mr. Bellucci, Mr. Taylor, we'll have the vote first.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a...
So moved.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
Yes. Well, Mr. Taylor, do you want to... I don't want to jump ahead.
Why don't we go ahead and have the discussions first before the vote? Okay, let's go with Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bellucci, and Councilmember Rouse.
And Mayor, this is for the London Bridge?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I just had comments because I had planned to abstain, and I didn't want to abstain without justification. So in 2011, the city bought this piece of property for $6 million, which was twice the assessment, to protect the airbase from commercial development. I believe state funds were used. And then in May of this year, the Development Authority sold it for $1.8 million to London Bridge Development LLC with additional $50,000 for site cleanup. And so I had questions that, of course, I hadn't, they weren't answered. And so I didn't have clarity on if there was an RFP, kind of the process. I know there's a five-year laydown, no insight into the value of the leaseback. And so one of the questions I had from District 8 was, you know, could the city have benefited from the same strategy without a $4.2 million discount? from the same strategy without $4.2 million discount? We understand that Dominion is, of course, involved, and so being that one of the principals or partners of this development, this London Bridge Development Company is my state senator, and I had some questions, I'm abstaining, and so I just wanted to provide that to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bellucci.
Thank you. I want to make a comment on two, on number five and also number 12. I'm going to start with number 12, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yes.
And that's really just to highlight the good work and partnership that our federal, state, and local representatives have undertaken to deliver for public safety for the people of Virginia Beach. I don't think we note these successes as often as we should. And what you see on number 12 is this ordinance to accept and appropriate $8 million from the Department of Defense Community Investment Pilot Program. And this appropriation was secured for the city of Virginia Beach by Representative Kiggins and our federal legislative delegation. And then another $1.4 million from the Virginia Military Community Infrastructure Grant Program. And those resources, as Vice Mayor noted during the informal today, was secured by Delegate Ann Farrell-Tata and Chairman Barry Knight and our entire Virginia Beach delegation. They deserve a lot of credit for working together with the city of Virginia Beach to ensure that our city has the resources necessary to continue to be the safest city of our size in the country. And I just want to make sure they get their due appreciation for their hard work on our behalf. So thank you for that. The other thing I want to talk about is number five, and that's an ordinance to amend City Code Section 21-407 regarding charges for towing and storage of vehicles. We had a discussion about this, I'm going to vote for it tonight with some hesitation. We had a discussion about this at a previous council workshop, and I raised concerns about a few things. I raised concern about the prices that are being charged to people whose cars are being towed. I raised concerns about a provision that would have an automatic escalator out until the year, I don't know what, long into the future. Without council action, these fees would go up with no review automatically. And I also raised concerns around the need for consumer protections, or the better understanding of what consumer protections are within this industry. We do have a towing advisory board, and I want to applaud Councilmember Remick for his, really, I think, responsiveness to the concerns that I raised. As a result of hearing our concerns, Mr. Remick was able to work with the towing advisory board to remove the automatic escalator so that we won't be automatically facing these price increases. If you recall, anyone who was paying attention, probably few, during that conversation, the people who are affected by this often have the least. And I know that from personal experience, I know that from anecdotal evidence. People who are towed are often late to work. Sometimes it's irresponsible, but sometimes it's a matter of juggling the responsibilities of life, not under, maybe they can't read the signs. Maybe they're not familiar with the area. There's lots of different reasons why people can be towed, and I have really strong concerns about the need for consumer protections in this area. I do think the towing advisory board was responsive to those concerns, and they removed the automatic escalator provision. And the council has the authority to make decisions about what those fees are and another generalized matters related to the towing industry for a reason, is to ensure we have an industry in place so that we can tow illegally parked vehicles that block emergency access, where people just park in handicap spaces improperly, or they park in on neighborhood streets where they're not supposed to park. We need to tow those cars. But we also need to be aware of the impact that these fees, or in some cases, I know people's cars have been towed, and then they didn't realize it right away, and their cars weren't worth that much, and the next thing they know, they don't have a vehicle anymore because the cost to get the car out was worth more than the vehicle. So I say what's good for one is good for all, and if the towing industry wants us to look at the fees, then we need to look at consumer protections. So I'm going to ask the city manager formally to do a review of best practices of consumer protections in towing around the country, and compare those practices with what is legally, not only the manager, but also the city attorney, with what is legally permissible within the city of Virginia Beach and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and to provide a presentation for us that provides not only what do we need to have, a healthy, thriving towing industry, but how can we protect the citizens of Virginia Beach? I know in District Three, my, people I represent are much more likely to be towed than to work for the towing company, and I want to know what we can do to protect them, to protect their livelihood, to protect their vehicles. And so if the industry wants to look at increased fees and increased ability, and I understand that, we need to look at what we can do to protect our citizens, and that's exactly what I'm requesting today, and I look forward to engaging in that conversation in the future. So, Mr. Manager and City Attorney, I'll be sending you information about what the types of things I've been, I'll be looking for, and I look forward to that analysis and discussion. We need to make sure that if we're going to protect the industry, we also protect the citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Point of clarification, K5, the towing ordinance has been pulled?
Yes.
Right, so we'll discuss it later?
Yes.
Okay.
I, pardon me, I won't repeat all that later.
Not a problem. Okay, Jennifer, then Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted for the record, I'd also like to abstain from the planning item number five for the same reasons as my colleague, Councilmember Taylor, except for the record, the applicant is not my state senator, my state senator is Senator Aaron Rouse.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, I echo some of the thoughts that Mr. Bellucci had. I understand that probably the towing industry needs the raise, but these rates have gotten pretty high, and I do recognize that it's probably the people who can least afford to pay that who will be in that position. So I think if we can look at the issue and what our practices are and try to do something to make certain that, I think, people are not towed unless they have been pretty well notified that it's not a place to park, is important. So I echo what Mr. Bellucci said and hope that we can look at this issue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Did you?
Oh. I want to also just mention on my abstention, I have a letter on file with the city attorney.
Okay, do we, so we're ready for the vote on the consent agenda?
The vote is open.
Vote is open. Okay.
By a vote of 11-0, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson, noting the abstention on L5 of Councilmembers Rouse, Taylor, and Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we're going back to item four, ordinance to adopt a city council policy, rate legislative agenda process and adoption requirements. Rosemary?
Mr. Mayor and Mayor and Council, we had a lot of discussion this afternoon about this issue, so I'm not going to, I'm going to be brief. I still support it. We've had a lot of difficulty with our legislative package these last couple of years, and, you know, taking on national issues that really don't affect us as a body, and also to see that when our legislators, they get our package, they know that the council is really supportive of us, because they always ask us, how many people voted for this? What was the vote for this? And so when we send a package to them, they'll know that it's truly a council package and that it's got the support of the council. So I would, and knowing also that this process is coming up very fast, I know there was some discussion about deferrals, but with the package and us doing it, coming up so quickly, I felt like we really needed to go ahead and make a decision on this. And so I still would like to move forward with moving for this approval this evening. So I move for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any other discussion on this? Sabrina?
I would like to offer a substitute motion for deferral for this item for the reasons I mentioned already during the workshop. I think it's important that we have further conversation, a discussion about this particular item, because it does impact the legislative agenda that we as a body would be sending to Richmond. And I think last week, when we were discussing it, I asked a couple of questions. One, could we, will we still have an opportunity to provide revisions? And then, two, was this the last time, pretty much, we were going to discuss this? And I was under the impression, and the affirmation I received, was that we were not moving forward with this piece of legislation. And so for that reason, at the time, I had further concern, and I still do. I think this particular item should really reflect us as a body, and there are others who feel that we need to have more discussion. And if we're going to send or elect and approve a new plan, new protocol, I think it should be reflective of most of the body or all of the body, and we should all really want to support something like this that affects the total body. And so I'm moving for deferral for additional time to discuss this. I particularly have concerns about having three people supporting an item for it to move forward, and then having two-thirds to have to vote to support an item. I think that may be problematic. I believe it will be restrictive, especially, you know, if you have the majority or a group who wants to go another way. It leaves those who may dissent or may not agree, for good reason, not to have an opportunity to move something forward. And I think we want to make sure, as we all represent different districts, we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to support residents when they bring items forward that, you know, perhaps the body may not agree with. If we want to limit the number of items, I'm sure we can do that without those restrictive measures in place if the concern really is the amount of items that we're sending to
Okay, we have a substitute motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Pardon?
Does she have a date?
Do you have a...
I mean, 30 days? Is that 30 days, 60 days, 30? Will that give us enough time to discuss it?
October 17th.
Okay, all right, October 17th. Is there a second?
Second. I also, so I don't understand a rush to discuss it because the legislative agenda has played out as it has for however long it has. So if we want to say decades or for however long, so I don't know that, I don't understand a rush to implement this this year if, particularly for the newly electeds, we haven't had the opportunity to go through the legislative agenda as it has been done historically. So I don't know that I'm ready, from my own experience or my own observations, to say I want to make this change for a number of the reasons that Councilmember Wooten shared. My concern is that this is, and I shared it with you all earlier, but in principle, I understand it. My concern is how this will be applied in practice, and policies matter because personalities change, but policies don't. So if we enact this policy now, and then personalities on council change, and maybe people aren't as willing to collaborate or work together, to Councilmember Wooten's point, that can be very restrictive to an issue that's very important, but there could be a majority on council that disagrees, and someone with a valuable position is locked out. And so I don't, I'm not compelled to put a date to the deferral. I would like to get through the legislative agenda and continue this conversation as we're going through the process. So that's my position. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Michael, and then Chris.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a different perspective, having participated in the process for a number of years now, and that is that ultimately, in order to advance anything on this body, you need to have six votes. So I don't think a threshold of three is really a challenging threshold when we're forming a document that represents a consensus position of this body that's reflective of what we perceive as a consensus position of the citizens who we represent. I think the three-member threshold protects the body and the community from the insertion of divisive national political issues where the city council has never taken formal positions and frankly should be more appropriate in debate at the General Assembly than the city council chambers. So that's why I really feel like the threshold of three isn't restrictive and does not dissent the minority. What it does is it ensures that anything that we are moving forward for consideration is going to have at least a fighting chance of being adopted by the body as a consensus position of the body and reflective of what we determine is that position for the city. There's no silencing of dissenting voices. Dissenting voices will have an opportunity to participate in debate, to raise their concerns, to have their voices heard, but if they can't get three, they're certainly not going to get six. And, or we've discussed even a threshold higher bar for the legislative agenda because this is such an important document. So I don't see it the same way. I think it's, I think it's pretty fair. I think it's a mechanism that helps us get to a position that we can speak with, you know, as close to a unified voice as possible in terms of our legislative agenda. I think it's reasonably fair. I think it's fair, and I think, I just want the public to know that that's not the intent. The intent is to ensure we have a document that reflects a majority or even possibly a greater-than-majority for such an important document, and that's a reasonable request.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with Councilman, Councilwoman Wooten, and I'll just share, if any of you observed us earlier in our discussions, we were talking about this key issue, voters' rights, special election versus appointment. And if you flash back to before the five newly elected members joined council, I'm not sure if there were three members in the previous body that supported that discussion getting on the agenda, but in the end, it was a tight vote, six to five, and we didn't have any members of the delegation that participated in the legislative process last time that picked it up. It was actually a member of the House that did not participate in those discussions, and there was no supermajority. And here we were today, spending 30, 35 minutes discussing the issue of special elections versus appointment for the replacement of Sheriff and Councilman Holcomb's seat. And so this is an example of, there may have been three to get it on the agenda. There was no supermajority, so we didn't send it up there, you know, all agreeing the previous council. The General Assembly decided to table it and then vote it down, and then here we are today dealing with the exact same issue. And so for that reason, not only do I support deferring it, but I would like to participate in the process that was present before, at least experience it. And then if it's flawed and we can't get anything passed, we could revisit it, but Vice Mayor Wilson earlier did present us some data on our success rate, and I believe it was over 50%. I'm not sure if that's good, bad, indifferent. But with this situation, council did indicate the people wanted to appoint their elected officials. General Assembly said, no, thank you. And then here we are today, deciding as a body, as a majority, that we want to give the people the right to vote. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Sabrina, then Rosemary.
Well, I think we have, you know, we've had four new people who are actually, who came onto the body. Half of them are saying, let's discuss this. Let's have an opportunity to experience what the process was before. And, you know, speaking to that, I remember the process we had before, never had any indication that it was problematic. It's the first time I'd had a discussion about it. And so as I mentioned before, there was a request from one person, and then it seems to have moved forward, and now, you know, we had a couple of... And now, you know, we had a couple of brief discussions, and now it's on the agenda to vote for. And, you know, in terms of getting the three people, we have that issue with our agenda. And what happens is, if the majority, you know, doesn't want to move forward on something, and that is the message to the body, it is hard to get two other people to support something that you want to move forward on. As was mentioned, it can be personalities, as was mentioned, or I would say, it can be politics. Politics happens on this body, but politics should never get in the way of doing the people's business. So, if there's an issue that's concerning the residents which any of us serve, and because of politics, because there is a message to not to support something, that can happen. But it's not fair to the people we serve who need issues to go forward to the General Assembly, who need those issues supported. And so, I think we should have a more of a robust discussion about it because the, well, someone could say it's well-intended. As was mentioned previously by Councilmember Rouse, there are some unintended consequences that can be detrimental to the voices of the people we support and who support us and we represent.
Okay. Rosemary?
Thank you. Not to prolong this, I just wanted to remind everyone that no matter, no matter what, that any one of us can go to a member of the General Assembly and ask them to carry a bill for us. In fact, we have a very special member of our council who does have a special ear of one of our legislators. But any of us can do that. And there have been times when something didn't make it to the package that some of our members have done exactly that, and they, they actually were able to accomplish what they wanted to. So, this doesn't stop anyone from having their voice heard because our General Assembly members do care about us. They may not always want to carry, carry the bills that we ask them to. I read some information today that out of all the, the things that we've asked in the last five years, they only picked up 56% of them. And of course, not all of those passed either. That was, the pass rate is much, much lower. So, they don't always necessarily like what we like, but we, they, they have the opportunity to do that. So, I'd like to just go ahead and call for the question.
Okay. Okay. Sabrina?
So, I requested a deferral, which was seconded by Councilmember Rouse. So, in terms of the actual deferral timeframe, is it your wish to do, to defer it indefinitely?
I have no timeline. I don't, I don't believe there's a rush to do this this year. I think this is something, I recall the document being passed around, there was some conversation, but I recall thinking, "This is not the last conversation. This is something that, as a body, will work out, will work through, maybe make adjustments." So, I'm not, if it comes down to it, I'm voting no on this, but I'm requesting a deferral, and I don't need, I don't see why it needs to happen this year. I'm not convinced that this is a time-sensitive issue. I think that there's enough experience on this body and enough knowledge on this body to be able to get through the legislative packet as has been done for the numbers of council before us. As Councilmember Taylor has mentioned as part of this discussion, there's a cultural norm of the General Assembly preferring a majority, but it's not in the code. So, the General Assembly member, whether on the delegate side or the Senate side, if they see an item that speaks to their value system or their issues, they'll pick it up. So, it doesn't, I understand that that might help, but I don't think it would hurt to put as much as we can in the packet and then hoping that somebody will pick it up. And if they don't, at least we asked. At least we tried. There's no harm in putting forward all the things that we want for our city and for our citizens, and then it's up to the General Assembly to decide. But I have, I don't understand the pressure to move forward with this this year. So, if it's, I'll go with the majority, but I'm under no pressure to vote for, to put a date on this. I'm okay with indefinite.
Okay. How about at this point, we have a substitute motion for deferral for 30 days on the table? Can we open the vote on this?
No, she said indefinitely.
Indefinitely? Are you modifying?
I think, I think to give us time, I think indefinitely.
Okay. Okay, the motion on the table is for an indefinite deferral.
Do we have to vote for that?
We got to vote for that first.
No, but we have to vote for that to become the main motion.
Correct.
Yes or no?
Yes. That is correct, Mr., no, we will be voting on this first. This will make it the primary motion, correct?
If it passes.
If it passes. Okay? All righty.
The vote is...
Yes. I'm sorry, this, I mean, is, if there's support to defer it for a shorter period of time because there is no rush versus indefinite, which would indicate we may not get to it, I don't know if, if there's the support for the indefinite. Is there any willingness from Councilmember Wooton and Rouse to put a timeline because we don't just want to throw it to the side? We really do need to discuss it, even if we have time. Because I don't think there's support for the indefinite, and I don't want to waste our time.
Well, I certainly can modify the motion for a deferral for 30 days. To keep it to a timeframe where we can discuss it and keep it at the forefront, I think that's important. Well, while I am certainly mindful that we can certainly build a relationship with those in Richmond, and that's something that we certainly can do, but we don't have a lot of engagement with them. And I think this, you know, we should exercise that option to have engagements with them here because I don't spend a lot of time in Richmond. I have to serve here. And so, happy to do it when it's necessary, but I, it's not that simple, you know, as was mentioned. We, you know, have a job to do here in Virginia Beach. I can't travel to Richmond on a regular basis.
So, the motion has been modified to a deferral for 30 days.
So, just make sure, what we're voting on is whether this becomes the main motion. There's, there's two motions on the table. One is to pass it, then a substitute to defer it for 30 days. So, we vote to see if that becomes the main motion.
This is, and then we would have to vote again?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, at this point, the vote is open.
The vote is four to seven, so that, the substitute motion has failed.
Okay. Now, the main motion on the table is to approve, you know, the ordinance as of right. Okay?
Give us just a second. We have to reset the voting here. So, the initial, the original motion was to approve, and that was by Vice Mayor Wilson, seconded by Councilmember Berluci. That vote is open.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of seven to four, that motion has been approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinance number five, to amend the City Code 21 that 407 rate charges for towing and storage vehicles.
We have one speaker, sir, and that is Michael Resnick.
Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Thank you for your time. I don't have much to say about this matter, but one key important part, I don't understand what the city has to do with the towing department. And I keep hearing that we must make sure that towing industry is, I guess, alive, that they're making money. That goes against everything that we learned about commerce in our society. One thing I would like to say, or second and third I would like to say is, you supposedly have this towing council. This towing council is non-existent. Recently, I live in the Weston, biggest mistake I made, made that the city, I guess, profited as well or supported. I had a guest. I told him to park at a certain spot. It was a visitor's spot. I forgot to give him the little visitors and the tag. Their vehicle got towed. One of the towing companies clearly towed it without anybody calling them. I guess they monitored the place. Clearly on the sign that says $145. When I went with a friend to pick up her vehicle, they charged $170. Wouldn't explain why, said, "Hey, pay it or leave the car." Okay, we picked up the vehicle. Number two, it says in your own handout, it is towing council, which I would like to know how to reach them, what is their number, and who is on this towing council. They're supposed to give you a survey, and they're supposed to give you a receipt that explains every detailed charge for this. Again, towing company told me, "Take it or leave it." So, I don't understand what the city is sitting here talking about, "Let's increase it from $145 to $200." Would we have nothing to gain for it? What do the citizens of Virginia Beach gain from this? $65? And then you're towing, the storage is going to go from $25 to $60? When did the city council become members of the business? And I would like to know, if you don't mind, every one of you, tell us if you have any affiliation with any other towing services in this city? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, any discussions? Mr. Remick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As one of my many duties as a city council, I am liaison to the Towing Advisory Board, and we have met twice this year, and we're going to meet again next month. And so, back on June 27th, we, our staff, city attorney, presented this revised towing ordinance that was last revised in 2013, 10 years ago. And that's when the price of $145 per tow was instigated or came about. Towing, so in June 27th of this year, we heard some feedback from my colleagues on council. So, the three issues were the towing fees, consumer protection, as Councilman Berluci spoke to earlier, and then when will council review and revise this ordinance? So, back to your point, previous speaker, there is a form that you can file for a towing. That's my understanding, and we do talk about that. And that's, that's wrong, that the towing company did not offer that. So, we can certainly talk after the meeting about that because that's wrong. We do take up those issues at our towing advisory boards as, as feedback and responses. So, as for the towing fees, staff has revised or confirmed the $200 per tow, and as, as per inflation with, the inflation leads to about a towing price of $184 versus our current $145. That's 10 years ago that that last price went into effect with no increase, no inflation over the 10 years. So, we also have towing companies. So, the other question you just brought up a minute ago is, why does council, why is this in our purview? Why are we involved? It's really back to Councilman Berluci's point about consumer protection because without our oversight, the towing advisor, the towing companies could charge any number, any price, and then you'd have to go against the towing companies. So, I believe that's the number-one reason why we have this towing advisory, and it's in our purview. It's also state code, and maybe city attorney Stiles can speak to that. So, the three issues back in June 27th, the towing fees, the consumer protection, which is in the state code and is a part of this ordinance, but does not cover everything that Mr. Berluci... Now, my, my car has been towed before when I was least likely or at least able to pay that, that fee of a hundred and some dollars back a few years ago. But the third issue was when city council would review the ordinance. And so, back on June 27th, we said five years. We did speak to other or work with other cities or look at when they review towing ordinances. We heard one year, we heard two years, we heard five years, but most localities review it annually. And so, we said, "Let's do it every two years." And so, we can come back in two years and keep this policy in place, all the fees and other parts of this ordinance, or revise it. So, all that being said, I hereby move for approval of the ordinance.
Do we have a second? Okay, any other discussion? Michael?
Mayor, thanks. I'm not going to revisit everything that I said, but I do want to just tell a little story, if I could, and then I want to address one thing the gentleman said. When you talk about how it impacts people who are least in a position to be able to afford it. When I was a college student, my car was towed from a friend's apartment building that I was staying at because my house wasn't ready at that time. I was couch surfing for a little while. And we lived near the campus, so it made sense to walk. I didn't have a sticker. Thought I had a guest pass, but it was something, was some issue with the guest pass. My car was towed, and I didn't realize it for almost a week. And I had to pay, I think, over $1,000 to retrieve my car. It wasn't in Virginia Beach, it was in a different city. That was a lot of money for me then, as a college student, just going to class, wasn't paying attention to my car, had no reason to look for it. I wasn't using it at that time. And it really impacted me. And to this day, you know, I remember that. I had to ask my parents for money, and I was glad that I could do that. But then I just thought about, "What about the person who doesn't have a parent that they can ask for money?" And what would they have done? And what if they had a car that, you know, was kind of a beater? And that's how they got to work, or that's how they took care of their mother? We've got to be more thoughtful about this, and that's why I'm very interested in that consumer protection conversation. I'm willing to support, though, for me, Councilmember Remick and his recommendation here, because I believe in, that he's done a lot of due diligence and he's done a lot of work here. And, but sir, I want to address one thing you said directly. Why do we need a towing industry? And what business is it of ours? I'm going to tell you another story. There's a neighborhood that I have the privilege to represent in Virginia Beach, and for their, just, I'm just not going to name it right now. They have a terrible problem with inoperable vehicles, vehicles with modifications, they're not supposed to have, illegally parked vehicles. That is a nuisance to the neighborhood. They need those cars to be tagged and towed. They are impacting the quality of life of residents in the neighborhood. And because of some of the issues that we've had with towing in Virginia Beach and their, their ability to staff and buy equipment, it's true, sir. I mean, I've had the experience.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry. We have to observe the rules.
Those cars, we had trouble getting them towed, and the, the nice neighbors there were incredibly frustrated. So, why do we need a towing industry? We need a towing industry so that we can get those inoperable vehicles off the streets, clear the streets that are, that are blocked for emergency vehicles. You need to be able to call a company and say, "Come and get it. Hook it up. It's, it's in the emergency lane." And that's why I think we have a role in this. So, we have a dual role. We have to ensure that we have an industry that can come and get those vehicles, but we also, at the same time, have to ensure that we have some protections. I don't think we're square on the consumer protection side. I have some real concerns about that, as I've expressed. We've got to, we've got to look into that. We've got to find out who's doing great work in this area and let the companies tow those cars that are, that are towed, and we need to make sure we take care of the great people who live here and visit here, too.
Thank you. Okay, Amelia?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, to applaud Councilman Remick for bringing this up, to at least look at it amended, and along with Councilman Berluci, make something better for all. Because when towing happens, it doesn't matter who. They do what they do, but at least we have better oversight with this amendment in an effort to make things better. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I think we are ready for the vote.
The vote is open. Can we close it? By a vote of nine to two, you have approved the motion.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to our planning items. Number one, White Cliff Presbyterian Church for a modification of conditions, conditional use permit, religious use, 1445 North Great Neck Road, 2307 Millwood Road, and parcels between 2307 and 2309 Millwood Road and District Eight.
Thank you. Okay. The first speaker is... The first speaker is Mrs. Marsh and then Susie Price.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm here to speak to you about Lake Conrad Two. It is an integral part of the Wycliffe property that a developer wants to fill in. And I think it's important that you look at the handout that I gave to the clerk. You may not get it while I'm speaking, but it does have a picture on it of the inspection that is done for the storm water management reporting that we do to the MS4, to the Virginia Department of, of the EQ. And it's important to note that this was reviewed last year. This holds 500, 53,500 cubic feet of water. And the question that I would like to know is since we paid $140,000 just a few years ago to dredge this lake and some additional monies to improve the Wycliffe property, we put a new roof for 15,000 on their building. We did some tree removal a couple of times, probably about $25,000. We put in a Mitsubishi mini split. We don't know the exact numbers because we've been asking for a FOIA response for over two weeks. But the question that I really want you to think about is, does it seem smart to have just a few years ago paid $140,000 to dredge Lake Conrad Two, to make it a better lake for storm water? And all the 35 acres around it to collect the water so there is no flooding and there is no backlog on Great Neck Road, which was misstated in the JPA report filed for the developer? Does it make sense to fill it in with dirt now so we can build 12 houses? Everyone I've asked this question has said no. And it wasn't that long ago that we were all sitting in the other office across the way and talking about Dewberry. Dewberry was a big deal. We spent 2.6 million on Dewberry. And so at the end of the day, what you need to think about is, are you making a wise decision for us? We have a lot of information in a booklet you received in your pocket and it's about 33 pages. There's a lot of people who have signed a petition. I believe it's over 6,000 because they're very concerned they're going to flood when you decide to get rid of a storm water management facility that is working perfectly well just to build some houses. You really need to think bigger term. You need to think about Dewberry and you need to think about the citizens and not pay special treatment to a developer who is already building the Atlantic Wave Park and on the special development for that. It needs to be about the citizens and we are sinking and we have flooding issues. So I hope you'll really consider this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Ms. Marsh, who authored that book? I received a copy last week. Who was the author of that?
Wendy Crutchfield.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes.
Just, I don't think she lives in District One Rocky.
The next speaker is Susie Price. Susie Price. Glenn Terry. After Mr. Terry is Julia Terry.
Good evening, councilmembers. First off, my name is Glenn Cherry, but my wife is too, by the way, Cherry. Anyway, I come to you today because, you know, this lake that we're talking about, I'm familiar with this lake since 1979 and it was there a lot longer than that. My children, which now 48 and 39, played at this lake, caught crawdads at this lake, caught turtles at this lake. It's a very sanctuary type place. My grandchildren now go over there and do the same thing. Now, I'm imagining that everybody here has an education. You're pretty smart to be where you are. But sometimes common sense needs to come into play. In this particular deal, it doesn't make sense. If somebody was, if you had a lake and you wanted to build a house in the lake, I'm pretty sure you're going to have to do a study to find out how far you're going to sink a pylon into the water to be able to sustain having a house built. That's one thing. The second thing is, I don't think you would want to have the traffic. You got turning into this neighborhood. Soon as you turn in, the next turn is going to be into where these 12 houses are going to be built at. So there's quite a few people that live in this neighborhood. Now we're going to, the way I understood, I heard there was a study where there'd be 200 entries and exits going into this particular area. So that being said, again, I got to go back to the common sense. I don't feel as though they're, they're afraid for you guys to drain this lake and build a house in it. Because the builder wants to get X amount of dollars out of his investment. And I get all that. We're all business people. That's what you do. But to take away a sanctuary and there's pictures and I'm sure you've seen the studies. I know you have. And it's a pretty pristine looking lake. And I know things that the church who's involved is more so now leaning towards trying to create something out of it and have a conversation with the city about creating something out of it. So I guess I am just going to ask, try to use your brain, try to use the common sense part of your brain and decide whether or not it's a good idea to go ahead and build a house, six houses or four or three in the middle of a lake. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
The next speaker is Julia Cherry. And then after Mrs. Cherry will be Jenny Pasaris.
Good evening.
Hello, council mayor. Thank you for letting us speak tonight. Really do appreciate it. And Mr. Taylor, I especially appreciate all the effort you've put into this and I know you're working hard as others are too. My name is Julia Cherry. I am a resident of Great Neck Estates.
Ma'am, if you could speak into the microphone so they-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, anyway, I'm a resident of Great Neck Estates. I'm the lady who goes out there and films every time we get a rain. I don't care if it's a small rain. I go out there and I videotape the lake, I videotape the dam. I think I've proven that Lake Conrad is a great resource. That's already a asset of the city of Virginia Beach. And I implore you to do your due diligence. And if you haven't visited the site, please do. We have a lake that collects the water from Great Neck Road. It flows through the pipes. It goes through Lake Conrad into the, the other area, which I forgot what they call that. Wendy, you could tell me. Anyway, there's no sense in, in filling it in in order for a builder to be able to build houses on when there's other property that maybe he could go somewhere else and build on. But a lake is not a, a property that should be sold to a developer to build houses on. And I really do hope that if you haven't visited the site, that you do go visit the site. It's extremely sacred ground. It's still used for religious purposes. Our three-year-old granddaughter has learned to use her praying hands at the outdoor altar. Not everybody has that in their backyard. We happen to have it in our front yard in Great Neck Estates. We've been able to use that, that land and we appreciate it. And the church has been wonderful neighbors and we've been wonderful neighbors to them as well. I'd like to see this park, we call it Red Bridge Park. We'd like to see it go back to the, the original use, which would be for the special needs community. Have a park that special needs children and able-bodied children can both use. And just turn it back to what it's meant to be. Let it be a lake, let it be an asset to the city of Virginia Beach and let the water flow over the dam the way it's intended to do. Thank you for your time and I really do appreciate it.
And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jenny Pasaris and then Derek Copeland.
Good evening.
Good evening. And thank you for listening to us talk about this so passionately. So this is the book that all of you received last week. So I'm just going to go over a couple important pieces. The first part is the removal of existing open space benefits. I know that it's in the guidelines for all neighborhoods to have at least 8% of open space in their neighborhoods. And so if Great Neck Estates, if nothing was built on this property, the sale did not go through and say the open space committee were able to buy it, then that would give us our open space that we require. Okay, which is within your existing guidelines. And there's plenty of pictures in here that show that it has been public use since 1950. I've been there since 1974 with my dad. Also, I know that there was a bond referendum and there's a lot of money been put aside to retain storm water management facilities. This is already an existing storm water management facility. So why would you put anything on top of it? Just have the city buy it or have the open space committee buy it with a lot of the funds that they've already received. Bond referendum, I believe it was 576 million dollars. And then open space has already had their own money. So it's already existing, it's already operating. And it also, as Julie had said or Rona had said, that it, 35 acres up and down Great Neck Road flows into this lake. And we don't have any flooding problems right now. We've never had to have flood insurance. And I would hope that this doesn't happen because in the future, we might have to have flood insurance if Mr. Bishar gets his way. The other thing is the amount of money that the city has already spent, $200,000 on this property. That's taxpayer money. That's our money. Everybody's money. So why would you allow a sale to a developer when I believe there's other areas of the city? I believe it's called rehabilitative development. There's other parts of the city that could be rehabilitated to put apartment housing on because I know there's a shortage and I know we need that. And affordable housing. So I think developers should go in that direction and stay away from storm water management facilities. So it doesn't cause more problems for the city down the road. Because we're already spending enough money.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next speaker is Derek Copeland. After Mr. Copeland is Wendy Crutchfield.
Welcome.
I am Derek Copeland. I am the acting president of the Great Neck Estates Civic League, speaking for that group.
Sorry, Mayor, does he get 10 minutes?
When I called in, I was specifically asked the question as the active elective president.
He is the leader of, yes.
It wasn't given to me that way. I'll, I'll adjust the time.
I hope not to use it, but the more than three is appreciative.
Okay.
So as representing, you know, the, the Great Neck Estates Civic, the Great Neck Estates citizens and neighbors that live there. You know, I, my role is to hear what they have, their concerns are, come here and speak to them. I did have a chance to speak in front of the city council last year in October. It was an interesting opportunity to be able to speak on the issue of the same land where Bishar was asking for 1.3 million dollars. And this has been an active concern of our neighborhood. Thankfully today, I'm not speaking alone and I have the neighbors and, and my friends, you know, people around the area speaking with me. With that, I want to just kind of review a little bit of history of where we're at today. How did we get here to make sure that we're considering all of our options that are occurring? Basically, when I've done my research here, I learned a little bit that in August of, in August of 2018, there was the flooding. I believe that flooding was an important aspect. Mayor, when you were running, that was one of your big concerns. You have a, do we really have to wait 15 years in order to solve flooding problems? And that was an important thing. And I believe that in 2021, it was voted on in order, in the September timeframe, in order to pass an ordinance, in order to protect areas and land that would, is responsible for storm water mitigation within the storm management system. In there, it was an interesting situation because there was given three weeks to make a change amendment to the plan. And honestly, I feel that the group that did that were heroes because I had a chance to review to the planning commission. They spoke and within three weeks, they presented a very interesting opportunity of how to adjust the plan to be more open to, they said it was basically too strict. The, the, the policy was being passed was too strict, but was being asked, so they were supposed to lighten it. And one of the things that I have that was stated, presented that, apologies. I want to read what she quoted. All my notes are all over there. So basically, the, when she spoke, the question was, what is this amendment really changing? And she basically said that if you come across property where there is a capacity in our existing storm water system, which is rare to find, that it won't increase the demand on existing system. That was what she was presenting to the planning commission to change. Now I feel that that is pretty much a direct issue that we're speaking to today. We have come across a rare piece of land that has a lake on it, Lake Conrad Two, that directly is used for the storm water management system. And that if that had been passed two years ago, I believe it got deferred, planning commission did not approve it. Not that they were actually against it, but they actually said it was too quick. Three weeks was too fast to make a decision. And so it was deferred and I believe it's been deferred multiple times. These things take time. To be able to make an appropriate decision in the immediate time requires all options to be considered. However, that is a guideline that would honestly directly impact the decisions made on this land's sale, usage and how it's used, how it's used by a developer or what can be done with it. And I find it's interesting that that had a quick, now I believe there's an option here that this is being considered for deferral and being considered for all the possibilities. So if that was deferred and it's been two years, we still haven't figured out a guideline, how can we make a decision today or at any time soon in order to fully review what this land could be used for? We need to make sure that we are considering all of our options. So in speaking to that, I kind of asked that we make sure that if this is being deferred, if this is being considered, all of our, our situations that don't rush the issue. I think there's stated that three weeks is too fast. That was two years ago almost, that we're still waiting. And almost, I would say defer it until a decision can actually be made on what should occur with that original ordinance. What is the policy? How can we vote or make a decision on what land can be used for if we don't even have the guidelines voted and decided on? So I'd ask that we first figure out what are the guidelines for open space land that directly impacts the storm water system? How do we use that? What are the rules? Currently it was no impact. If those things can be decided on, then we can appropriately make a decision on the long-term direction that this land and this sale and this reclassification occurs. The last thing I just want to kind of call out is honestly, a thank you to the, the city council and the four new members. I'm actually very excited. The earlier discussion was very, you know, nice to see a new fresh, you know, instance to this city council. I myself was elected to this role. Honestly, it wasn't one that I volunteered for. I was actually, and I knew if I said, I want this and I went home, my wife would be angry at me for taking this role. But I was nominated, I was voted into the role and I immediately took that as a responsibility that I had to my community and to my neighbors. It wasn't an empowerment for me to make decisions that I felt I agreed with. It was a responsibility to listen to the people that I represented, to hear what they had to say, speak on their behalf, because not everyone could be here tonight and be able to, you know, share with you what their concerns are. And I look to you all in the exact same role. You were elected to this position in order to listen to all the folks here, much smarter than I am, on what's going on, what's with this land use. I just ask you to continue to listen to them and make sure you hear all they have to say before any real decisions made. Thank you.
Hey, thanks a bunch. Appreciate it. Thanks for doing-
Appreciate it. Thanks for doing what you do.
The next speaker is Wendy Crutchfield. And then after Ms. Crutchfield is Martha Thoreau.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Oh, a photo op.
Not everybody but me.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Crutchfield. I'm in District Nine, and I appreciate the work that Mr. Schulman is doing to enact some stormwater resolution, a stormwater resolution. My family moved onto Lake Conrad, Great Neck Lake, in 1971. I have seen so many good things that have come from the land that Wycliffe wishes to sell, what many of us call sacred grounds. Phyllis Jackson's Helping Hands Day Camp was held around Red Bridge for decades and left a profound and lasting impact on many of us teenage buddies. I understand that it was pivotal in the lives of families with children who had various disabilities, who suddenly had community connections and services opening up to them. Since then, services expanded to the infant STEM and early intervention programs, where my mother lovingly volunteered until the end of her life. Last week, I provided each of you with a detailed booklet outlining many reasons this land should not be returned to residential housing, and this lake filled in to create lots. We have over 6,000 signatures on a petition that's growing every day. The no-build VB wetland signs are in such high demand that we are putting weekly orders in, as neighborhoods throughout Virginia Beach are asking what's happening, and agree that our natural waterways should never be filled in. Even the Supreme Court in its recent ruling said carving waterways out for infill is prohibited. So it was so exciting to hear council unanimously agreed to explore purchasing the land for open space last week and the subsequent deferral. Thank you so much for taking the time to fully explore the potential of this site as a benefit to the public. I made a pro and con list for preserving this land or returning it to housing lots that I will leave with you. It includes an idea that the A-frame building could be turned into a special abilities community center and museum curated and staffed by adults in the special needs community. I don't believe city jobs exist for adults with intellectual abilities, disabilities currently. It would be an appropriate tribute to Phyllis Jackson, Wycliffe Church, who provided this use for so many decades, and a wonderful visual impact along Great Neck Road of the commitment Virginia Beach has made to those with disabilities. As Steven Todd, CEO of Bluebird Beach Bungalows, would say, do good things, preserve Red Bridge, park and the A-frame as open space and a park for the community. Thank you respectfully for the opportunity to speak. We have several children and other residents who wish to speak at the October hearing and are looking forward to appearing before you also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Martha Thoreau. And then Travis Thoreau.
Got to watch the paparazzi here.
Good evening. Good evening. All right, if you follow the Virginia Beach City Council meetings regularly and listen closely, you're likely to hear our mayor, Bobby Dyer, comment that we are running out of land. Many of us who have called this place home for any length of time have long embraced the moniker "tide water" as the region where we live. And indeed, it has been named "tide water" for a reason. Yes, there is land, low though it may be, and lots of water in the form of lakes, streams, rivers, bays, and a big ocean. It is truly a diverse and wondrous place of nature, and as such, is very attractive to those who would live here. And so when Mayor Dyer says we are running out of land, what he's really saying is that the developers are running out of land to build on. Obviously, that industry can only survive by building, and therein lies the rub. More and more often, builders are looking and lobbying the city to build on or near wetlands and fragile areas that include tree canopies and natural waterways. And more and more often, the public is saying no to such development that would destroy the very things people are attracted to here in the first place. And while the building industry is restrained, to some extent, by some state and federal laws which limit what can be built, where and how, of late, this city government appears to have relaxed its permitting restrictions to allow for some potentially damaging developments, such as Asheville Park, which experienced serious flooding during Hurricane Matthew a few years ago, and which cost us taxpayers multi-millions of dollars to correct faulty stormwater drainage infrastructure that was caused by poor development practices. Since that time, the city has experienced a great deal of money to study stormwater management best practices and mitigations. At one point, it seemed the city would become more restrictive in what it would allow to be built and where. And in conjunction with the stormwater bond referendum, which passed by 70-plus percent of the voting population, the city made promises that it would tighten up on permitting guidelines and the requirements placed on builders and developers. But of late, another refrain of the mayor has been, we have to allow for changes regarding making allowances for looser requirements placed on developers and builders. Sadly, in making this statement, Mayor Dyer is in fact breaking a promise made by our council when they marketed and passed a stormwater bond referendum. Indeed, Councilwoman Barbara Henley has since pointed this out on more than one occasion when there have been development discussions at council meetings. She has clearly stressed that they, the council, have gone back on their word to the citizens, and that the citizens will stop trusting council because of this. And Mrs. Henley is correct.
Thank you, Martha. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The last speaker is Travis Thoreau.
Get a picture.
Well, I'm glad you want to say, send me for the best for last. Well, I do want to say before I start, that this is, living there to my heart, pretty much, and I do too have special needs, so this is really to my heart. So on behalf of Phyllis Jackson's inspiration, and on behalf of the special needs community, and a big thank you to Chris Taylor and Barbara Henley, I urge, I urge all of city council members to preserve and save this land, please. And every single one of you have the power. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you for all the speakers. This item has been deferred. I believe open space is going to hear it next week. And the goal throughout this entire process has been to ensure that we heard from the community. We do have a fiduciary responsibility with our tax dollars, and so open space is not an open pocketbook. And we have to understand that this is a delicate situation. There's 11 of us. But in this situation with the work that the community has done with, when I met out at the property with Ms. Cherry and several other members, I don't think there was a petition at all. And so, and 6,000 signatures in less than 45 days, I think across all districts, not just District Eight, I've spoken with people that have signed a petition that don't live in District Eight. I think we just have an opportunity here to, whether open space comes back with the recommendation about it or not, I hope the community has the confidence that we have listened to you as a body. And I've said this before, I haven't lobbied any of my council members for a yes or no. As the gentleman said, he was on the thread of insulting our intelligence with the common sense from the country. You know, all we had was common sense when you couldn't go to school. But nonetheless, I just think we have an opportunity, we have a developer right now that is open to allowing open space to look at it. We have a church who has a desire to do something for the community, and we have a city council I believe that wants to make a good decision. So I'm going to leave it in the hands of the professional staff. I'm honored to work with Councilwoman Henley, who consistently does her homework and has done so for three generations. And so hopefully, we can get to a place where this is a win-win-win-win. But ultimately, I just wanted to thank those of you that have put your sweat into this, you've done your homework. I believe, for the most part, I haven't had any nasty emails. You've been respectful. You're very dogged, not playing with you guys, District Eight. You're serious. I understand the sentimental piece. I took my kids out to the lake, and it is a great place, but we do have a decision to make. And so I continue to ask for your patience as we allow it to go through the process. And with that, I just appreciate everyone coming out tonight, and it has been deferred. So we'll wait for open space to get back to us, and hopefully, everybody will show up October with a smile, and we're going to let this thing go through the process. So thank you so much.
Mayor, we need a motion to defer.
Yes, and I make a motion to defer.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's open the vote.
And just to be clear, this deferral is to October 17th. Is that correct?
I believe so.
That's what's stated on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
The vote is open. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have deferred this item until October 17th, 2023.
Okay, the next item is item number four, Speed Gears LLC Covington Family Trust for conditional use permit for our auto repair shop at 212 Dorset Avenue in District Four.
The first speaker is Christopher Hyderber. Sorry, I probably have totally messed up your last name. And he is the applicant, correct? You'll receive 10 minutes, if you'd like.
Oh, how y'all doing? I was expecting to speak if, after, if there's any questions or anything, so I wasn't really prepared. But yeah, I'm just trying to open this business and help the motorcycle community here. I do, I help people that are less fortunate. I try to do everyone, you know, the right way, and do a good thing for the community. So I mean, basically, I'm here for questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We have a few more speakers. The next speaker is Clyde Covington. And then Tony Sersa will be after Mr. Covington.
Hey, good evening, and welcome.
Mayor, city councilor. Yeah, I'm Clyde Covington. We own the property that Chris is trying to get a business license on, and I'm known Chris now, next month will be a year, very respectful, hardworking, and is numerous automobile repair in the Cleveland Street area. And he's trying to fulfill his dream. I've never had a problem with him in almost a year. Seems very respectful, hardworking, honest businessman. And I don't see any reason why he shouldn't get the permit to fulfill his dream, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Hey, thanks a bunch. Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Tony Sersa. After Mr. Sersa is the last speaker, Michael Resniak.
Hey, good evening.
Hello, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Councilman. I've been living here all my life, and this young man is trying to start a business. I think he'd be an asset to Virginia Beach. He's a hardworking young man, and I would like to support, you know, him getting his license to do business. Thank you.
Thanks a bunch. Hey, welcome back.
One last thing I want to cover on that, what was it, L5, K5, on the towing thing?
No, no, we can't talk about that.
But I'm, it's a statement.
No, no, no. The speaker's rules, I read, are explicit.
Yes, sir.
You have to talk what's on the item.
I got you. My three minutes starts now. There has never been a question, or what I have brought up, about the gentleman's integrity as work ethics or anything like that. The two other gentlemen that got up are in-laws of the people that owned the property. They knowingly rented this property to this gentleman, knowing that it could not be zoned for what it is intended that he wants to do. For that reason, and all the other violations compared to, and I'm going to go through them one by one, and their application that they say that they have, that they won't do, it is currently there, and I sent the pictures to, I forgot the young lady who spoke to me last time. Let's see, what was her name? Carrie Brockholdt. I sent her the email with all the pictures showing all the violations. All right. It says that on their application, that they will not have any vehicles there for work. The pictures that she's received from me, which I would have thought, city council zoning, somebody would have did their work since I showed up last time. Again, no one did. I did the work today for you and yesterday. There's vehicles there, a part, that's against everything that goes into the zoning, and what they put in on their application. Two, there's tires sitting on their property. Okay? Motorcycles is what it's going to repair, right? There's automobile tires there. Those tires have lingered on to my property. And if anybody knows about tires, when they sit and they get wet, what do they attract? Any guess? Mosquitoes. There's numerous other things I could go through, which I won't, but one other one. Clyde Covington, the gentleman that got up. As owner or representative of his mother, or the trust that owns this property, you might want to give him a rebuttal and ask him, say, since, what, I bought my property in 2009? No, 1999. Every work that has been done to that building, there's not a single permit for it. Yet, I, when I had my property, or when it was, I guess, available, I got permits for every single one of them. And then again, on this application, it says that it's Zone B2. That's incorrect. That property, 212, is industrial. So either...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Either that applications need to be amended...
Thank you.
...and resubmitted.
Thank you.
If not, you have violated everything that I voted for, you guys.
Thank you.
And Councilman Rummick?
The...
Thank you.
Mr.?
Sir, you're out of order.
Mr. Hyderber, would you like to come back up for rebuttal, please?
Welcome back. Hi, how you doing? I have been trying to clean the place up from previous business that was in the building. I spoke to the planning commission, and we've agreed, you know, everything, we spoke about vehicles, all that, nothing with my business goes on that man's property. That man has a RV on his property that a homeless man lived in for over five years and sold crystal meth out of, and he allowed it. And the week before Christmas, that RV burnt and burnt the man alive in it. And it's still there. It's still in that thing, and I've, all the surrounding businesses have called and the city and tried to see if anything could be done about it. But I don't know, I've never seen this man until two weeks ago in this room, where he claimed that he tried to speak to me. I'm baffled at why, what his intentions are. But I have several letters of support that were sent to Ms. Barnes that can vouch for my, my, my character and my business, and the planning commission, they have been out there. We spoke about everything. I'm, like I said, I'm baffled at what this man is trying to do here. I'm, like I said, I'm baffled at what this man is trying to do here.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Amelia?
Yes, I represent District 4.
Yes.
I've been around the area and looked, and I know there was, you know, automobile and others prior to your business.
Yes.
First, I would like to ask Carrie to speak for a minute.
Who is it?
Any rebuttal to what the young man said at the back?
We did receive an email from the speaker today at 442 with some pictures attached. It's not clear from the pictures that were sent exactly which property. We will send an inspector out to make sure that there aren't any violations. I would say there are no known violations or open violations on this property at this time.
Thank you, and I've received several about your character. And like I said, I have driven around the area, I know exactly where it is, and I would like to move for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Second, good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's open the vote.
Give us just one second, I'm sorry. Who was the second, I'm sorry? I did. Vice Mayor, thank you. The vote is open.
We have seconds and thirds.
Can you close it? By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the application.
All right, and then the final thing tonight is number eight?
It's not the last name.
Okay, which one?
Eight, nine, and 10.
Eight, nine, oh, I'm sorry, we got eight, nine, and 10 coming. Ascensions Group LLC, AG The Wave LLC for Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 422nd Street and 2106 Arctic.
The first speaker is Kathleen, I'm sorry, I can't say, what's her last name?
Sprower?
Sprower, correct.
Good evening.
And she is the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Kathleen Sprower. I'm very nervous about this. My husband usually speaks, but he's away with the military. So I'm here on behalf of our business Ascensions Group to request a recommendation for approval for our short-term rental conditional use permit. I am the co-owner, and I am the property manager, the lead property manager for our rentals. I own and run all of them. I'm also an ICU nurse, I sit there a few times a month. So my husband wrote a nice professional speech for me to say, but I speak a little bit more passionately about our business, and that's kind of what I wanted to tell you about how we run our properties. We currently run four short-term rentals in the oceanfront and one in Sandbridge. We live locally in Sandbridge. I am at these properties multiple times a week, and I drive by them every single day and on my way when I do, to work, when I do work at the hospital. I'm not blind to your concerns about short-term rentals, and I know that some people do not run them properly, but I'm here to tell you that we do run ours properly. We are in compliance with all of your rules and regulations that you have set forth for them. I heavily screen our guests, and I talk to every single one of them. I know why they're coming, where they're coming from, how many cars they're going to have. We're actually stricter with our cars than you guys even require at most of our properties. Also, when we buy them, they're usually disheveled. This property you're approving, one of them was a hoarder house, and we've completely renovated it top to bottom. We customize them, we build our own furniture. We put everything we have into them to make them nice for people to stay, so they have a comfortable, cute spot, and then we recommend where they can eat, they can find us at Commune every weekend, so they contribute to the other local businesses. The last thing I want is a neighborhood disturbance. The neighbors have my phone number, multiples of them, and I don't want them to destroy my hand-built furniture and all my hard work staying there. The last thing I want to say is, why do we need short-term rentals in Virginia Beach? One, I could talk many stories about our guests and why I like what we do, but this kind of stood out to me recently. I had to go to our duplex, one of the sites for internet, and I pulled in, and this family, they didn't drive the nicest of cars. They had two teenagers, and they were treating their teenagers and three of their friends to a vacation. And as I was sitting on hold outside, I was just thinking, like, if they didn't have our rental, that would cost two to three hotel rooms plus food, and I was just so happy that we could provide an awesome place for them to stay and treat their family to a vacation at the end of the summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Philip Hines. And then after Mr. Hines, we have one Webex speaker.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to just get right to it. My name's Philip Hines, I live in Thalia, so I'm nowhere near the oceanfront. I have no business or personal interest in these applications, not just this one, but the ones after this. However, I do sort of feel compelled to speak about this, since I am involved in the real estate community. Deciding to arbitrarily set a date that applications in certain parts of the overlay district be denied, I think is unfair, given the fact that these applicants bought these properties six months to maybe even a year ago. You know, they've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars cash in many cases, and they've been given the approval by the Planning Commission. I'm not sure how it's fair to the applicant to do everything by the book and get the approval from the Planning Commission, just because there's some heat from residents, and we have a process, and we've gone through years of deliberations. So let's maybe ramp up enforcement for the people that are not doing it the right way, because there's a lot of illegal Airbnbs. I can't imagine the investor would invest all their time, money, and resources if they knew by doing the right thing they would just be denied. So if we're going to make a change to the overlay district, you know, that could be a discussion that we have, and let's have a big public comment period about that and some engagement. But I can't imagine investors doing their due diligence that meet the criteria, would spend all their time and money in Virginia Beach if they can just arbitrarily be denied. Again, I encourage you to approve the recommendations made by the Planning Commission, not just for this application, but for the other ones that come behind me, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Christopher Sprower, and he is via Webex. Mr. Sprower, you are unmuted and may begin.
Evening. My name is Christopher Sprower. My wife just spoke to you, and I am the other owner of Ascensions Group. I wanted to start by apologizing that I wasn't able to make it tonight. Unfortunately, my military service pulled me out of the area. I kind of knew last month, based on Councilman Remick's comments when I spoke in front of you in support for our CUP at 40222nd Street, that he would likely contest this, based on his stated opinion that there were too many STRs already in the Beach Borough. I'd like to start by highlighting that the CUP should have also been on last month's agenda. It's the other half of the lot that you guys approved last month. It was submitted at the same time as the one that was approved, but the problem was the city's STR department had an error in the legal filing, so they split it off to this month. I would also like to highlight this location. The lot's located at 22nd Street and Arctic Avenue. It's directly across the street, within a stone's throw of the Atrian Hotel and Resort. The corner to the south and west is the Motor Lodge Hotel. I know Councilman Remick last month stated his concerns about the degradation of the neighborhood because of STRs. However, I feel very strongly that this doesn't apply. This lot is on one of the busiest roads in Virginia Beach, and it's directly across the street from two very large hotels. My wife and I live minutes away from the property. No one wants to preserve and make the neighborhood, the Beach Borough, the oceanfront, the BiB District, better than us. We are the property owners and business owners in the area. We have a strong history of short-term rental management. We've hosted over 750 short-term rental stays. We've never had an incident, a complaint from neighborhood. We provide over $100,000 so far to date to the city's tax base from STR taxes that we've paid. We direct our guests visiting Virginia Beach into the local restaurants and the businesses in the BiB District and the oceanfront. These are places they wouldn't know, they wouldn't see, they wouldn't go unless we provided the insight. My wife spoke a little bit about the experience that we provide and opportunities for people that don't have the same wealth as a lot of people that can afford three or four hotel rooms for their family to be able to come to the city. Lastly, I would urge you not to relitigate the short-term rental issue. City Council, under guidance from the Planning Commission, established approved overlay districts and regulations. It took years and hundreds of hours of public debate and discourse to establish these overlay districts and provide overall STR guidance. The city's Planning Commission recommended approval of the CUP after doing due diligence on a property which we purchased over five months ago. The guidance provides clarity to local business owners, such as us, who want to invest their very hard-earned capital into the city, the neighborhoods where we work and we live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers. There's no opposition, but would you like the applicant to come back up?
Would the applicant like to come back? Oh, you're good to go?
That's all the speakers, sir.
Yeah, oh, good God, yeah, but that's the applicant and the other applicant. Okay, good. I think we're ready. Are we ready to move on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I don't think short-term rentals is an easy topic for this council, this body. I think I just heard Vice Mayor Wilson say this has been discussed for seven years. Please understand, ladies and gentlemen, that I listen to a lot of people who live in this area, in the OR and Old Beach District, and there's a lot of opposition to short-term rentals. I was not aware tonight of the fact that last month that we did approve of your short-term rental. So thank you all, Mr. and Mrs. Sprow for speaking. Kathleen, I thought you did a great job. So I'm going to move in a minute to approve this, but all that being said, as a real estate broker, you don't necessarily buy a property without knowing that you're going to have your investment come through. So this is a conditional use permit that I hope this body will approve in a minute, but that being said, you don't buy a property necessarily knowing that it could be denied. So that, all that being said, I do think, listening to the people that live in this cherished neighborhood, that have grown up here, lived here for a long time, we need to listen to their voices. This is a community of people who live there 365 days of a year. So I'm going to start asking staff to start looking into how we can redefine and re, this part of the overlay, not the Pacific Avenue or Atlantic Avenue, the resort as we know it. But the other thing about this application, it is on 22nd Street, one of the major, that's an exit out of the resort. It's a major, it's a lot of commercial real estate on the street, it's a very busy street. So all that being said, I'm going to move to approve this application.
Second.
We have any other discussion? Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have approved this application.
Okay, moving on to planning item number nine, Nicholas Iliolo, Conditional Use Permit, Ray Short-Term Rental at 50520th Street and a Half, District 6.
The applicant, Nicholas Iliano. Sorry if I've lost your name up. And then the next speaker will be Nicole Pace.
Good evening.
Good evening. Should the applicant or opposition go first? Okay. Good evening. My name is Nick Iliano. I'm the owner of 50520th and a Half Street. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Jamie George, who is the owner of 50720th and a Half Street. She's the next agenda item. Our properties are connected, and we have been going through this process together. So in effort to not duplicate efforts and rehash this again on the next item, I'm speaking on behalf of both of us here. You know, I believe one of my neighbors is going to come up and speak in opposition. We've communicated with them via email for the past several months, and, you know, I wanted to be known that we hear our neighbors' concerns, and we are empathetic to their concerns. We have done our best to try and alleviate their concerns over the past few months, but obviously, as you'll see, they're very firm in their stance, and I certainly can respect that. Perhaps this discourse here about short-term rentals can be a catalyst for positive change that is beneficial for all, as Councilman Remick has alluded to. The key point I'm going to make is that we are committed to doing this the right way, adhering to the conditions of the Cup while being respectful and accommodating to our neighbors. Jamie and I aren't some, you know, business or out-of-town company that only cares about profits. We're lifelong Virginia Beach residents, looking to start the next chapter of our lives and reinvest in the community that we call home. Jamie and I have lived at these properties for over six years now, and we are the original property owners since the current structure was built in 2017. These properties in the surrounding area will always have a special place in our hearts as we both started our young families here. We are both looking to relocate out of the resort area to begin that next chapter. We will both absolutely be staying in Virginia Beach. In doing so, we want to hold on to our existing investments and operate the properties as STRs. With our properties being in the Oceanfront Resort Short-Term Rental Overlay District, we see a phenomenal opportunity to take advantage of our existing investments in this evolving area. The potential supplemental income from the STRs would be incredibly impactful to our families, and because of that, we feel very strongly that this is the best thing to do to help secure our futures and our children's futures. I do think it is important that visitors to our city have all kinds of lodging options, you know, similar to the anecdote that the previous applicant shared. The hotels will always be a great option for most, but there are a lot of traveling families that prefer to rent a home or condo that better meets their needs. The neighbors that are, you know, opposing our applications, believe moved here in 2019, and it seems like most of their concerns stem from absentee landlords in the close proximity they have been to other short-term rentals. The homes on their end of the street, the west end of the street, are very close together and bunched in. It's not necessarily the case with us. Our properties are farther away and on the east end of the street, closer to the ocean boardwalk, et cetera. But either way, as I stated in the beginning, we are committed to doing this the right way as present landlords. We will be contracting with a company called Sojourn for Property Management. All Sojourn homes are protected by NoiseAware technology. NoiseAware is a privacy-safe noise monitoring system that provides insight into what's happening at our properties between check-in and checkout, and tools to resolve noise issues quickly. It enables us to fix vacation rental noise problems before they lead to neighbor complaints, parties, or property damage. Their properties are continuously monitored. All Sojourn homes are protected by remote lock, and we will have universal access control of all locks. Large gatherings and events are not permitted at Sojourn properties, nor are they allowed per the terms of the Cup. If a guest violates our house rules, Sojourn will cancel their stay on the booking channel. Once that stay is canceled, the guest is then considered to be trespassing, and police have a recourse to intervene if needed. That was a concern that some of our neighbors raised, that the police did not have recourse to intervene. We're happy to give our neighbors a direct line to both myself and Jamie, as well as Sojourn if need be. They also use a software to screen prospective renters to ensure only legitimate guests get access to our properties and ensures no fraudulent activity takes place. Sojourn is professionally licensed and insured in Virginia Real Estate Brokerage. They are woman and locally owned and manage hundreds of short-term and vacation rentals in the region. Nicole Pace, the COO of Sojourn, is in attendance tonight. These are just a few examples of the service that Sojourn provides that we hope can help to alleviate any concerns and show that we can continue to be great neighbors even as a short-term rental. Sojourn markets themselves as high-end rentals with standards from the kitchen equipment to the thread count on the sheets. They put hospitality at the forefront and provide a service. We do not want our rental properties to be a free-for-all. We are able to charge a premium, given the services Sojourn provides. Our target market would be vacationing families, whether they're in town for beach and boardwalk events, Atlantic Park, a sports tournament, et cetera. All of that is to say, we will not be ignoring rules and regulations. I personally am very much a rule follower and very thorough, if you couldn't tell that already, and I typically don't like conflict, and I do everything I can to keep everyone happy, sometimes to a fault. So as stated, you know, perhaps this discourse can help to enact some positive change now that, you know, our neighbors have the ear of city council. We all deserve to have our voices heard, you know, in the interest of trying to appease all one item that comes to my mind that could potentially be beneficial to the community is, as those future discussions take place for the city to potentially explore a condition that all short-term rentals must be managed by a city-approved property management company like Sojourn. And, you know, I believe this is being talked about in the city of Norfolk, for example, for a requirement to get their STR cups. You know, in my opinion, having that property management company would help alleviate the absentee landlord issue and lack of oversight. You know, if, you know, I understand this is a sensitive issue, so, you know, if you're considering, you know, denying our applications due to neighbor opposition, you know, I'd ask to consider the following. I've done a lot of research and looked into this, and, you know, council has approved numerous STRs over the past few months. You know, how would it be right for our applications to be singled out, denied, because two households oppose? Given we have met all the planning and zoning requirements, we should have the right to enjoy the same liberties as our neighbors. We are committed to doing this the right way, and for whatever it's worth, there are three households on the block that are in full support of these STR applications. So in closing, I hope I've successfully outlined how we plan to operate our short-term rentals the right way with an experienced property management company, and while being respectful and empathetic to our neighbors. We are young, growing Virginia Beach families, looking to take the next steps in our lives and re... and reinvest in our great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Chris? Yes.
Mr., is it Iliano?
Iliano.
Iliano, okay. Back when this originally came back, came before the council, there was some confusion on the original application that you all had parking and identified parking, and there was, I want to say, just a discrepancy. Was that, can you give me some background on kind of that?
Yes, so the conditional use permit, the requirement, right, is to have one off-street parking space per bedroom. The way that our property is set up, we, Jamie and I, both each have two off-street parking spaces per bedroom, and the planning department's requirement is that you must lease, you can lease off-site parking within a quarter mile of the property. We had a parking agreement in place months ago. I guess the planning department took a second look at that. It did fall through, so the reason we've asked for deferral the past couple times is because we've been working to get a new parking agreement in place. We successfully got a new parking agreement in place last month with a parking lot that is less than a quarter mile away, and it has been approved by the planning department. So we do have three off-street parking spaces, which meets the requirements for the planning department.
So when you submitted the original application, did you know you didn't have the parking, or were you just hopeful that?
No, when we submitted the original application, we had a parking plan with the off-site parking agreement included.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. The next speaker is Nicole Pace, and after Ms. Pace will be Sarah Welch.
Hi. Good evening, Nicole Pace. I'm the COO and the co-founder and owner of Sojourne. We operate about 250 short-term rentals between Washington DC and Virginia Beach. We just opened an office in Sandbridge, so if you're down there, you'll see our sign at the Sanctuary Condos. We are a licensed real estate brokerage in Virginia. I live locally. I have a local employee that lives in West Neck, a local employee that lives in Sandbridge, and a regional operations manager in Chesapeake. We operate about 50 licensed short-term rentals in Norfolk with no issue, adhering to all of our conditional use permits. We have a great relationship with the city there. We're very excited to have a great relationship with the city here. We're just kind of starting in Virginia Beach, so we've got about seven properties under management now. We always crawl before we walk and walk before we run. We like to make sure we understand how to operate in the city, we're paying our taxes, we have all our business licenses, so I'm excited to work with Nick and Jamie, and I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have about Sojourne or our operational plan.
Any questions? Okay, thanks a bunch. Thanks for coming.
The next speaker is Sarah Welch.
Good evening. I appreciate your time. My name's Sarah Welch, and I reside at 522 20 and a Half Street, four houses down and across the street from the two properties that were discussed at 505 and 507 20 and a Half Street. I stand in opposition of these two proposed short-term rentals and conditional use permits. My rationale for opposition is our street's already active with several homes that are either active as legal permitted or unpermitted short-term rentals. There are 35 homes between Mediterranean and Baltic on the north side of 20th Street, 20 and a Half, and 21st Street. With the number, current number of STRs, we have, we have had situations of loud tenants, parking issues, lawns being unkept. I've sent pictures into planning multiple times for that. We've also had a short-term rental for a very short period of time where the owners tried to short-term rent, and their property was destroyed because the people renting it were not the type of people that you would have wanted to rent to. They personally pulled their permit. They sold the condo because they had so many issues with the renters, and when the police were called in to manage the situation, they couldn't. Regularly, especially during the 100 days of summer, there's parking code, there's parking issues on move-in and move-out days, so when you're trying to go do groceries or whatever on a Saturday or Sunday, it's tough to get in and out. And at these two addresses, there was not ample parking. I personally experienced a situation where I had a renter come to my home and ask me if they could pay me to park in my driveway. Renters routinely park in the driveway that belongs to the houses that are a part of our condo community on 21st Street, and the owners have to approach them to moves so they can actually get their cars out. I am not a lifelong member of Virginia Beach. I moved here in May of '29. My house was built in 2018. I purposely bought the single-family home in this neighborhood that was mostly homeowners, and I didn't buy in other parts of Virginia Beach due to the high concentration of investor real estate properties. And I am a homeowner, and I live on this small street, which is basically an alleyway. I'm concerned with the potential of too many investor properties in a half-block situation. I'm concerned about the potential of property value degradation, home keep-up, safety within the neighborhood when you have too many people who you don't know who are supposed to be in the neighborhood. I am a single woman, so the safety's key to me. As you know, the city of Virginia Beach identifies their cups with the address, and as the homes are sold, the cup stays with the address. And in April, the people converted their house to an STR and then moved to Texas, and so we now have that. I've researched and found that--
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I ask a question of Ms. Welch? Ms. Welch, are you aware of any other opposition to this application?
My neighbors next door are not thrilled with it. They chose not to come because they figured it was a rubber stamp. So I'm still wanting the city council to hear my voice. I think we have opportunity to look at the standards, and when you look at the city of Norfolk, they only allow their conditional use permits for two years, and then the owner has to re-up. I think the evergreen of the address is something that the city council should think about. I also think that you need to think about where the OR district overlay is, which I've talked with Mr. Remick about. So, thank you.
That's all the speakers, unless the applicant would like to come up for rebuttal.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate that, again, we do hear all of our neighbors' concerns and that we're committed to doing this the right way with an experienced property management company. I understand Ms. Welch has had issues with absentee landlords and other short-term rentals in much closer proximity to her, but, you know, I would like to, you know, stand, stand by our commitment to doing this the right way. You know, we have our own parking area. We have the off-site parking leased if we need that. Be very clear about our parking situation and respecting our neighbors and our listing, and, you know, Sojourne is going to vet our renters as well. So again, we're committed to doing this the right way, and we know, we hope council agrees with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Iliano, for your presentation. You did a great job in your property manager. We just heard an STR approval a minute ago, and then this is a different, in my opinion, application. It's a different street. It's 20th and a Half Street, not 22nd Street. You heard Ms. Welch talk very eloquently, in my opinion, about what's going on in this community. There are a lot of short-term rentals on the street and in this community. The last thing about this is parking, which is what I hear about as councilman for this area. Parking is a really real issue throughout the resort, and so this puts more parking, challenges parking in this area. So one of the two lots on the agenda tonight, whether it be this one or the next one, has a grass area in the front, which could be parking, but it is, the applicant is choosing to keep that grass area and not convert it into parking. So I have to change now and ask to deny this application for the reasons Ms. Welch spoke about, and ask for your approval of the denial.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, the vote is open.
And the vote is to deny. Can you close that here? By a vote of 9 to 2, this application has been denied.
Okay. Okay, and the final item is Jamie George for conditional use permit rates, short-term rental at 507 20 and a Half Street, District 6.
So it's Mr. Iliano, would you like to come back? I know he was, he spoke on both applicants when he came up. Would you like to come back?
I guess it's probably too late now, but I, you know, I don't, if we can convert that green space into parking, I wasn't aware. That was a requirement. We had to have X amount of green space when the structure was built. But again, we've met all the planning department's requirements and are committed to doing this the right way and are trying to invest in the community in Virginia Beach. And, you know, Jamie and I are still looking to, you know, we're still planning to relocate out of the resort area. We have young, growing families. I mean, this probably, the denial probably, you know, compels us to sell our homes. You know, I understand that someone can't just buy up our home and apply for an STR permit again, but, you know, someone could buy our home and, you know, rent it out long-term, right? There's no, not restrictions. You don't have to get a conditional use permit to rent out to long-term rentals, and you never know what you're going to get there. It's a little bit of a roll of the dice, so, you know, we don't have any immediate plans to move, but, you know, if we do end up selling our house, you know, hopefully the the future property owners on that street, you know, care as much about it as Jamie and I would. Thank you.
Nicole Pace, would you like to speak? Okay. And then Sarah Welch, would you like to speak again? No? Okay. Mayor, that's all the speakers.
Okay. Mr. Remick?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Mr. Iliano and Jamie, thank you for coming tonight. I think we've already had this discussion. I am very sensitive to both sides. It's, again, a very difficult issue for the city, of course, for the country, and I am a real estate broker and understand property rights, but I'm going to move again for denial of the application.
Second.
Any other discussion? Yep, Chris?
I'm just going to read something from a constituent that wrote in District 8, and it won't have any bearing on my vote. I'm just reading verbatim because Councilman Remick, my colleague, did go on the record and say he was just going to adamantly oppose STRs. And it says, and this is just so this constituent understands, I hear you. I understand the tension Mr. Remick feels from his constituents. However, to deny any business owner who has gone through the process would be a grave mistake, in my opinion. I don't know any of these applicants, however, there were years of public input and deliberation by prior councils to get rules on the books. I wonder what good is the process if council is simply, is to simply reject the Planning Commission's recommendations. And coming into the night, I didn't really know if I was going to support your application because, I don't want to use deception, but I, from the original one, it just didn't appear you had the parking, but you had communicated you had the parking, and then you had to go back, and so that didn't sit well, but it also doesn't sit well to, I don't, I don't know if we can pick and choose winners or losers in this STR battle, so I just wanted to put that on the record for that constituent to read that. I have a young family as well. I applaud you guys as small business owners, but these are the challenges of small business. Some days you win, some days you lose, so God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara?
I just say to Mr. Remick, where were you a couple of years ago when we went through all of this? Because I guess I was the one who was out front the most on short-term rentals, and I could foresee this happening in communities that had short-term rentals, that it wouldn't be long before that's what they were, was just short-term rentals. And we did, of course, Sandbridge, the General Assembly stepped in and made that a short-term rental area, and we had no choice on it. So we were then just looking at the rest of the city, and this was the only area that actually asked to be in the short-term rental area. I think that's sort of where we ended up, that a community would have to agree to it. And it's awfully hard for me now to go back on the commitment that if the community had asked for it and the applicant met all of the requirements, it's hard to say this one can and that one can't. So if we're going to say that a community is no longer going to be eligible for STRs, I guess there's a process to remove that overlay, and I would encourage you to move forward with that. But as long as this applicant has met the requirements, I just feel like I have no choice but to approve, since we've approved so many. I mean, if they had not met the requirements, that would be another question. But I would, would hope that if this community wants to come out of the process, that they will come down and ask to have the, that right taken away. I think that's the way we need to go about it.
Okay. Worth?
Councilwoman Henley, I hear you 100%. I somewhat followed this long process a few years ago and kind of got lost in it, and I hear exactly what you're saying. We definitely need to come back and readdress this, but to me, having been in office since January, everyone in that community who lives there is now very strongly opposed to any more short-term rentals.
Okay. How about this? The vote's open at this point, and that is to deny, correct?
That is correct. The motion is to deny. Can you close it? By a vote of eight to three, this application has been denied.
Okay. Thank you. Where are you at this point? Any appointments?
Appointments. We have appointments, Mr. Mayor. It's quite a long list, too. The Act of Transportation Advisory Committee, Rob Lindauer. The Agriculture Advisory Commission, Brandon Horsley. And Betsy Morris. The Bayfront Advisory Commission, we have some students, Amanda Wong, Aubrey Moore, and Samantha Valkranger. Clean Community Commission, we have Catherine Rotolo, another student. Community Organization Grant and Allocation Committee, we have Robert, to reappoint Robert Hoffheimer. The Development Authority, Eric Kepplinger. The Historic Preservation Commission, Anne Mitchum, a high school student, and reappoint Jenna Morris, another high school student. Human Rights Commission, Nicholas Lundgren, another high school student. Parks and Recreation Commission, Clinton Mills for District 3, Tracy Mitchell for District 6, Eugene Towler for At-Large, and to reappoint Rob Hardigan for District 9. Public Library Board, Tiffany Arguello and James Vanterpool. And the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, to appoint Kentae Smith. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Move to approve? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those as read by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, is there any unfinished business? New business? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.